So I've known Ruth for seven. Yes, sir. So she's a wonderful woman. Item four on the agenda. Harold Wood. Harold here.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke with Mr. Ruiz today. As those of you all know, last board meeting, I got pretty upset over AEP rates. Now in the last week, we got another email come forward saying they're seeking another rate increase. Obviously, they're not getting the point here. So it's, our delegates are the ones that appoint and vote for the SEC Commission. So I talked to Mr. Ruiz today about drafting a resolution to send to every county in the state of Virginia's Board of Supervisors and every delegate in the state of Virginia, asking them to oppose any rate increase. And I'd like to have one address to the governor once again. Be honest with you, I'd like for the governor to respond to this. I know that, and let him at least, let the people know that at least he is opposed to any more rate increases. And somewhere between now and the end of this board meeting, I'm going to ask Mr. Ruiz to kind of semi-draft a resolution, maybe during our break or something, and get it ready to back a motion off.
On our agenda, Ed Talbert and Kirk Breeding, Buckland County Historical Society Museum Board.
They're not here.
They're not here either. Item six, Sandy Weekly, Extension Agent, Request Funding.
You want me to make this quick before you send?
Yes, I do. My teeth are doing the presentation.
I'm going to make a motion to give her $280 from each district account for 4H.
I've already had twenty signed up and I've not been promoting it and there's a great need there, so this time, it's greatly appreciated.
Who's singing? Lee and Roll Call it, Mr. Irons. Lee Craig. I also vote yes. Item seven, Brandon and Jessica King, Request County Sponsorship and Support for the Autism Awareness Event to be held at the Council Park.
Our county has a name for autism awareness and I have a five-year-old and I know council school has a lot of kids that have autism. So we're doing five walks at the council park. We're trying to do a co-ed softball tournament, a couple bake sales, and a car show. And I was told at the back end about insurance that I was needing and we had already spent $1,500 of our money and we want all our profit to go back to council elementary and high school, to their special ed department, as well as their sensory room. And so I talked to Mr. Hess and I spoke to the lawyer about being sponsored insurance-wise for the events at the park, is what I'm requesting.
We got information back from Bay Corp. that indicated the county sponsored the events, then the county's insurance would cover the situation. And that would save them from having to go out and get event coverage, which can be pretty expensive when you start adding up multiple events.
Okay. So we just need a motion to, we're going to sponsor it?
Right.
Okay. Okay, I'll make that motion that we sponsor the event.
Okay, Jim, make the motion. Dave, say in the motion. Roll call it, Dave.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
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 Greg, Lee, Craig. I also vote yes. Item eight, Alicia Stiltner, Director Buckland County Commanding Service Diversion Program, Consider Approving the Following Document for the Diversion Program.
Come with all this?
I am. And they have been, they've been used for years, but apparently, the board have never really approved them. Right? So the only adjustments that have been made in the three years I've been in the program is asking for notice of medical appointments should they need to be off from their work spots. And also, the payment of fines are now, are used as an incentive to finish the program. If they complete whatever their sentence is, then we give them credit towards fines and costs that is owed to Buckland County at a much lower rate than, I think, district court, we give them like $5 an hour and $10 an hour in circuit courts, you know, credit as an incentive to complete the program.
I'm going to get motion.
Question, Alicia, for another, have you checked all the legals with this year as to the diversion program, judges and everything? Do you are okay with this?
I know that Judge Johnson is okay with everything that I do and that I have them signed. Lee, I don't know, did you look over any of those documents?
It looks okay for me. And I, I think, from what I understand, I think, was it Crawford Ellsworth that probably put all this together as far as the guidelines and so forth, and that was years ago.
So Roger, that was an attorney that worked for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office, drew up these policies years ago.
2018.
I just wanted to make sure there that we've given her legal okay there. We had a motion, Mr. Stiltner.
Yes.
And Lee, say in it there, and Roll Call it there, Dave.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Lee, Craig. I also vote yes. Okay, go back to number five on the agenda there. Excuse me, Ed Talbert and Kirk Breeding, Buckland County Historical Society. Come on up, Kirk.
Appreciate you guys been able to work this. We had a presentation that we just want the, we got to connect on the trail, that they don't, on the trail, the hitchhiker, because they're living on the museum. But if it be okay, we'll just, we'll do it next time, since we'll, we'll have, maybe we'll do a presentation. If it be okay. Okay. And what we'll do, we'll just send, send it be okay, we'll just send some flash drives to all.
Is it a lot?
Is it, is it a lot?
No, it's not a lot.
You can send it to Sandy and she can print it out for us so we can have it.
Okay. Next on the agenda is, I don't know, can send agenda.
Motion.
Second. A motion and a second. Roll Call it, if there's no questions there, Dave.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Jeff. Greg, Lee, Craig. I also vote yes. Can send agenda. Next on the agenda is public comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to make a public comment?
Alan, could you get with Gary Wagner and check on those pictures and let me explain to you a couple things there going on down there? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Once, twice.
Hey Roger, did the public comment about anything we're here for?
Yes.
Public comment?
Whatever you want to speak about. Did you go through the metal detector before you come out? No, I was just kidding.
Jerry called and he's supposed to be on the agenda, but he's not, so I think he might have been on last.
You're here now.
What I want to talk to you about, I live upon top Dave Smith. And we live off of the 307 and CNX gas is definitely in the short of the road. But every 500 feet, they dig across it. They don't have permit to get across the highway. We're in 40 years trying to get a hard dog. Finally got a hard dog. Now every 500 feet, they're ripping it out. Want to cross that, that big pipeline. And I had something there.
The next thing is Betsy Branch Road, they've had it shut down off and on all from last August, so.
The least county roads are.
Yeah, the access out of Betsy Branch is now over 100 years.
How are they shutting down county roads?
Yeah. I would like to know that. Today, they had our road shut down on top of mountains for where I sit there.
Anything in regards to the roads, they're supposed to get a land use permit and go through Marcus. So I, I don't know if they're doing that or not.
If you will, that they're not, you're exactly right. They do what they want because they're allowed to do what they want. And they move their way around the whole lot.
Everything they're doing right now is because of mining. Anything they do right now is because of coal mining.
I guess our question is, we laid off of them on Betsy Branch because we. That's public road. They come up, was it last Thursday and cut it in two. We couldn't get in or out. They left, I guess, a ditch that big in the main road where we tried to get access over the weekend. They had to cut it in two again today.
So this is part of the.
Yes, this is part of it.
Did they notify y'all when they were?
No, no.
Well, I mean, where comes the, the road?
What's the name and number of the road they shut up today?
703.
703.
Sandy Gap, well, it extends all the way out to Sandy Gap Road, all the way to the end of that road. And then it goes down Betsy Branch. So they, they messed them both up. But, but our asphalt that we've had paid for several years, is they run their dozers and stuff on and just top it.
And you live, you live in Betsy Branch?
No.
I know where you live at.
From Dave Smith.
Okay. On the road, that's a road with dozer on, is it state or county?
County. And we've approached them several times. Please stay off of it and go.
They're on the first, you gotta jump on first, even. Time to run out back to the house here coming.
Are you familiar with anything, any of this, Marcus?
No, I was first heard.
Can you go up tomorrow and pay them a visit? And, because if they're damaging county roads, they're, they're going to be liable to. This don't sound like a crossing.
I know that.
Back in 97, they would drill in.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, they would have to have.
I was just going to suggest.
And before they bring them over, we'll drill them in there. The road just back to all the.
I don't know how active they were.
Quick question. When we agree to do a crossing, we don't, it's a crossing only. We don't agree to give them access to the entire county road to run dozers and swivel trucks on. So if they're doing that kind of damage, what needs to be done, Marcus is over the county roads, he needs to go up and do an assessment of this and then figure out a bill on what kind of damage they've done and send them repair costs. They only get, we only vote to approve them crossings, not to run dozers and back dump swivel trucks up and down these county roads.
And the thing about crossing is it not, it ain't you pay one fee and put 15 crossings on a road. Is that right?
It should be one for that one area.
Huh? Should have one per crossing. One per crossing, that's what I thought. So we will leave you guys forever in the morning tomorrow, give them time, whatever would they need.
To allow Marcus to get these guys.
I'll have to find out for Marcus exactly what's happened.
They don't have no, they're not, they're not flagging traffic or anything, they're just kind of closing the road?
Well, we know it's closed.
Really?
Yeah. No, you just show up and make that.
To close a road, you have to give some sort of notice, especially VDOT. You have to give a notice if you're going to have a road closed for longer than a certain period of time. Well, but still, if that's limited access, they would still have to give some sort of public notice, wouldn't they, Marcus? If they're going to have a road shut down for four or five hours?
Right, they should not be closing.
That's the whole point, they should not be closing. If they have a state's different permit, then they shouldn't be.
Is that a county road all the way through Betsy Branch up to your house? You get the right-hand fork, goes all the way up and comes out and then you go right-handed toward your house? That's a county road all the way to the top?
It is.
Right. Now the left-hand fork dead ends up there.
Sounds like to me, we're approving one or two crossings and they're doing multiple crossings. Plus destroying the whole county road, what time?
Last year, we had the same problem out of them, but they was on a state road in, on Route 628 in Burnt Chest, Horn Mountain. They destroyed Horn Mountain and they're doing that. And they actually had, they came in and helped us gravel, they helped the state re-gravel that road. But what they're doing now is just, you ain't allowed to do it. Want some more up around your house? Or have they done them already?
No.
So they've got to drill those?
How about after Marcus goes up there and looks at it? Takes some pictures. So we'll know for sure what's going on. But in the past, all we did is they pay a fee for a crossing there. Now I noticed this time here in their regular agenda there, there was several fees paid by, I don't know, CNX or whoever it was.
They can be charged criminal offense for that.
I don't know. We can look at it.
They gave us a, they gave us a park and they think they, we owe them for life.
We appreciate anything you can do to help. Give us time to meet you.
Oh, you want to meet at 8:30 in the morning in Betsy Branch?
Why don't you come, we'll bring you down, 703, come to the Dave Smith area. We'll come down that way, show you the family, take one swap up to the.
Is it one way, are they doing one-wheel pads and then pipeline per-wheel path?
Well, they got a main break line, they tell you to just pull this. This is one way.
Look, they're over. Were they leaving the pipe as, is that their property or?
Some of the, some idiot, you know, just to make it right away from the pipeline, I guess, what they're doing those.
That's gob gas and it's not, it's different than, than frac gas, you know what I mean? So it's all for the mines and that's, they're, the way they're setting their compressor stations up and pulling it, it's not, it's not permanent. That's why they lay it on top of the ground because they, they can come back and take all that stuff out. But now, you know, they're, they're laying it out of steel. You see them laying out steel. They usually lay it out poly. But now it's, I guess, steel may be cheaper than poly, so they're putting a steel pipe in there. But it's, it's supposed to be temporary. And then those, as those panels move, like you know, as they move, they move with them. And they're standing about 500 foot ahead of them all the time. So there's, there's a lot of work going to happen in there.
Other part is we approached the CNX and they said, they want to repaint the road red. So we've already talked to them about, about the south road.
Was that contractor that you saw CNX drop through or asked?
Both of them. We've talked to the supervisors, we ain't talked to the head guy that runs the job. But we talked to the contractors. They said that's the only way we can get to where we're going, get on the road with the dozers and stuff. And then we talked to their supervisors, I guess their contractors under, and they don't get.
Kind of different than what they went over in, in Whitewood did and put a 20-inch pipe, 16-inch pipe across the creek, you know. And where we just had got flooded and just kind of, a little bit of cowboy stuff, you know, do what they want.
We'd appreciate any help.
Call me there if you got, call me there if you got any trouble. You got my phone number.
Send me my, hello, you.
Person? Boy? What's the name of the person from CNX?
Justin.
Yeah.
Was it, he's over all the construction. And of course, Josh Ball is, he's the head over at CNX in this division up here. But we haven't talked to him. Do you know Justin Staint, the one over the construction, Black Staint?
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to go with DJ, I mean Marcus Stiltner?
Sir, I got the one thing for you, Mr. Raff, I'm sorry.
Brady, thank you.
First thing, I have Mr. Chairman of the Board consider adopting a resolution regarding the acceptance of deed by, in between Penny Jean Humbert Ratliff, Ariel Faith Ratliff, Bethany Nicole Ratliff, Kevin Humbert, and Barry Humbert. It's Humbert Road off of Page, off of Gun Branch in the Hurricane District.
Motion. Second.
So the second thing on the agenda, and the third thing we've already discussed and already approved. But, you know, the truck was purchased and the loader was purchased and it has been used.
Yeah, we, I think we are a little confused and put that back on there, but I, I don't think you need to vote on it really. It's already been approved by the board. As long as you do them after the time it's posted, it doesn't matter.
Okay, then, let's skip to item 14 in there and have a public hearing. I'll, the public hearing open then, okay?
We'll say that committee met, was it last week? Yeah, last, I can't remember the day now. But they met last week and did approve the amendment, additional appropriation of 1.75 million.
I'll close it. I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And Roll Call it, Dave.
Yes.
Jim, Jeff.
Yes.
Greg, Lee, Craig. I also vote yes. It is closed. And we need to roll call both in there.
Fifteen, Consider Abiding the Resolution Amendment to the Fiscal Year in 2023, 24 County Budget to Provide Additional Appropriation to the Total Amount of 1.75 billion or an amendment to Lake County Community Gas Road and Grouping Home Land Management, U.S. 460 141 Project.
And to issue the check.
And to make the motion to adopt the resolution and to issue it.
Motion, second. Comments? I don't know, Mr. Chairman.
Can you explain what that is, the 1.75?
Just for the, just for the floor lane from 744 section down towards Harles.
That's extra.
Our portion is standing. What is it, one-third?
All right. Got a motion and a second there. And I'll start with Trey.
Yes.
Lee, Craig.
Yes.
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 I also vote yes and skip back there to the public hearing, item 12, to hear public comments regarding the proposed conveyance by the Buckland County Industrial Development Authority to the town of Grand Industrial Development Authority to which the Buckland County Virginia Board of Supervisors must consent. And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And we'll listen to public.
Huddlehouse property, building, property. Yeah, huddlehouse property. Just a lot, yes. Motion, close the public hearing.
Roll Call it, Dave.
Yes.
Jim, Greg, Lee, Craig. I also vote yes. Now, motion to item 13. We got a motion. We got a motion and a second regarding the, uh, heated gift.
Roll call it Dave? Roll call it Dave?
Yes. Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Hey, Craig, I also vote yes.
Item sixteen. Consider adopting the following resolution for the ratification acceptance of the following deed for the acquisition of property as part of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineering Non-Structural Project. Page seventy-two.
Can we do both those at one time, Marley? I'll make a motion to adopt it at once.
Okay. Um, see the ones that are accepted there, so, um, get the motion and a second. Bring in, bring in Roll Call it.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yep. Craig, Lee, Trey, I also vote yes. Uh. Out of certain name, consider approving or ratifying contract L and J to recycle for demolition and removal of public use of factory, saying a lot of Oklahoma, off of State Route six oh nine, rural brick road. Got your property.
Mr. Chairman.
I ask is for the board to consider approving this conditionally. Uh, Mr. Gibson, who operates L and J Recycling, is attempting to get, he's asked for quotes for the commercial liability insurance that we require with the one million dollar coverage. And so he's expecting to get word back either tomorrow or Wednesday about that. So presuming that he gets the, uh, commercial liability policy that we require for vendors like this, in contracts like this, I'd ask that the, uh, board consider approving it.
Roll call it, second. Roll call it, questions? Roll call it Dave?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes. Yes.
Craig, Lee, Trey, I also vote yes.
Consider approving or ratifying asbestos study contract with Cardo Incorporated in regard to future demolition of a Maxi Command Center. You want to explain this, Lee?
Yes, sir. That, again, I'd ask that that receive conditional approval. So we haven't gotten a quote yet from, um, from Cardo, or really Sand Tech apparently taking over Cardo. But as I understand it, um, the fellow from West Virginia with the company, Cardo, Sand Tech, is coming down to meet with Brooke on site on Wednesday, and should hopefully have a quote, and I'll have a contract ready, so if the board can approve that conditionally, subject to the quote and needing procurement.
Okay. Also, he's supposed to be bringing his contract, and he's gonna plug in the amount. Can we add to that motion?
What I'll probably do, uh, Mr. Stelter, is I'll put some language in our contract, uh, making their contract an exhibit to our contract, but if there's any conflict between the language of the two contracts, our language we would control. That's what I generally do with that situation.
To give, uh, Mr. Horn the authority to go ahead and sign that contract, that way we don't have to delay it.
Yes, you could write that.
Okay. Sandy got all that?
No.
I didn't think so. Okay. In other words, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the, uh, asbestos study contract with, uh, Cardigo. Or no. And then, once they come down, they're gonna look at, they're gonna bring their contract, okay? They're gonna plug in the numbers of the actual, what they think it's gonna cost to do the asbestos study. If it's within the, um, actual dollar amount to where we can approve the vendor of choice, then I'm gonna allow, uh, Mr. Horn to sign the contract for them to proceed, that way we don't have to wait another month. That's the motion. Our department.
Our department.
Yeah.
Okay, you've got a motion, and did we get a second?
I'll say.
And we're gonna say, I'm gonna tear it up, and, uh, any questions? Um, Roll Call it Dave?
Yes. Yeah. Yes.
Ray, Danny, Ray, I also vote yes.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Belters here.
Belters here to answer any questions, and that's related to the last section. He's here to tell you all about it, if you wanna hear.
Okay, we have, uh, Jay and Jonathan Belters here with us, sir. I can imagine the amount of money we have to put up for.
Mr. Chairman, I've voiced, um, much of us voted on, uh, was to give the, you know, the match for the section of Poplar Creek, Phase A and B, the match needed on that, uh, to get the seven million federal money, so that'll foreland that part of it. So all that leaves is a section there from Route six oh nine going back towards the breaks. Uh, that was built as a two lane, uh, with some truck climbing lanes, and Craig, am I getting heavy here?
No, it's good.
Go ahead, okay. Uh, so anyway, uh, we'd like to go back, work on the VDOT, to four lane, uh, that section, uh, from six oh nine going towards the breaks, and we're gonna apply for additional federal money, federal earmark appropriation, the seven million to do that. So unfortunately, we would need a match again to be able to qualify for that, which would be one point seven five million match on that part of it. But that within four lane, the entire road, uh, from Grundy, uh, to the breaks, so it'd be a four lane all the way then.
What do you need most?
Uh, Jonathan, because you, obviously you don't have approval for that yet, do you? Or did I mean?
I do not.
Okay.
Application is due. I just learned this the other day, it's actually due Friday to the federal government. But we won't have a decision on that till the next, the FY twenty-five federal budget is passed of, you know, that's probably gonna be sometime January next year at least, but we do have to have a letter agreeing that be a match in order to submit the application. Same process as last year.
You got your letter of intent?
Right, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so this, uh, this will do the entire, uh, section in four lane, right? Okay.
Can we just make a motion on this later?
Make that motion.
Motion, uh, Stelter.
Second.
Sam and Mr. Cooper, bear. Roll call it. Travis.
Yes.
Okay, and we appreciate y'all being here, and thank you. Okay, item nineteen. Consider approving the following additional appropriations. Adam?
Motion.
Got a motion, Mr. Stelter. Second, but Mr. Cooper, and Roll Call it Dave?
Yes.
Jim, Jeff?
Yes. Yes.
Trey, I also vote yes. And, uh.
We, uh, we have closed session.
No, we don't have one second.
I don't have any closed session. Appropriation and.
I read Roll's. I don't have my glasses. And that lands, of course, down. You did get the business.
I got it.
We gotta make a motion to put them out.
Okay, do you have a motion?
Trey second, it's between Trey.
Dave?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes, yes.
Craig, Lee, Trey.
I thought Lee gonna vote on that again.
I also vote yes. Now. I hadn't contributions.
I haven't seen them yet. Craig's gonna play mine for you.
We're waiting on anything. Mr. Chairman, I need a motion to trace bird.
Okay. Flower. I had things to transfer some funds, and one again, one again.
I wish it reaches to the rescue. That motion for you.
Yeah, second.
Fill in the blank. I know, I'm joking, Edward. I was joking. I was kidding. Come on, man, chill. I swear you're up tight today. I don't know what it'll cost.
Okay, he's.
Who made the motion?
What was my child? Dave?
Transfer some funds.
Oh. Well, you played my mind. I already just say yours. You didn't catch that, did you?
All right.
Silence in the rescue and fire. I wish. Time out.
Had to get them by this week.
I'm putting, uh, a lock on it.
It'll be.
Roll call it.
That'd get them by this week.
All right, sir, Dave?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes, yes, yes.
Lee? Okay. Now. Anything else? What?
Budget workshop.
We're gonna schedule a budget workshop, uh.
Needs to be either next week, this girl's, excuse me, this girl's. Okay, we're trying to schedule a budget workshop. It's gonna be the weekend. For fifteen or sixteen. It's gonna be done by sixteen, twenty-five, on the week. We have to get it done before the sixteen. The whole budget can come by. For us now, uh, we're close, anyway, so we just need to have another meeting if y'all don't. But that needs to happen by sixteen this month, for us to do the first approval, May sixth, or maybe, then we'll have to have another meeting or a Tuesday or Thursday to do another approval. We have to do it, because Lee does this all the time.
All right. What's the date?
Say y'all want. Well, we said, I said, please, let's have it ten o'clock in the morning. Uh, what would you say? That's fine, can I do a number on that? I might sure, mom let me out, be on seven in the morning. Sixteen. You want you got late? Let's do five. But we see nothing wrong, everybody. Uh, we see what you want between now and sixteen. I'll do what? I'll pay you, you know, as you say.
Uh, the. Do the eleventh. Three zero is your contribution, don't worry.
Ten, it's a ten. It's Wednesday. Okay, I'm a teen. It's a teen. Is it ten, or ten, or four o'clock? Uh, it's six o'clock. Three o'clock. Three o'clock. Three, three. The ten, the five, ten, the five.
Five o'clock. I may play around with the trash, man.
You hold your tongue, man, you believe it?
I don't hold it no more.
Hey.
You got a plane?
If y'all put an airport in here where I can land in Grundy, you know, I could do that. Hey Craig, uh, we can shut the water road down, I can land in the road, maybe. Drive up in here.
Okay, what time, eleven, ten, or ten? Ten. What time, five o'clock? What, what, Craig wants it today. Craig wants it today. He still the tenth, though? Ten, five? Not even on Roger. The tenth, April tenth, at five.
Wednesday's gonna do Thursday. It don't matter to me.
You're reapplying a motion, not matter, I just, we need to, we need to set the workshop.
So you just wanna do Thursday then? Thursday the eleventh, the work too.
Hey.
Thursday the eleventh, is that all right? Thursday the eleventh?
Thursday the eleventh.
We just. No, the eleventh.
Oh, at five o'clock?
You said not Wednesday, uh, the ten.
Well, I know, I'm, I'm, I thought you were in church on Monday.
Not Wednesday night.
Wednesday's time of day, I was. Well, Roger, you gotta go to church.
Roger.
I'll make the motion Thursday and the eleventh at five o'clock.
Lady, are you providing me on Wednesday? I'd take Greg Donner to church, he looks fun. I'm gonna spin out with you, first thing, Thursday the eleventh, the eleventh at five o'clock. Motion, just a minute.
I'm not second.
Roll call it.
Yes.
Yes. Ray?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Ray?
Got you, buddy. Your turn, do you vote, Craig? There you are.
Yes, I'd like to ask, am I supposed to do this, or have we got any contributions?
Contributions. Buddy, listen, we've got here hard, we're gonna have to take a break. I ain't kidding. I think there's some discuss, I need to go to closed session for five minutes anyway.
We don't do contributions in closed session.
Now, I ain't talking about that, but everybody. Now, I ain't talking about that, but everybody, at least you can figure out what they're going to do, huh?
We'll take a recess.
No, I need to go into closed session for five minutes.
I would like to stay out of closed session myself. So we could actually get everything accurate out here on what's said.
So you want to go to closed session, or do what?
Are you, are you saying that you don't want to ever go to closed session again?
I'm saying, from my experience, Eric, it's better for us to stay out here unless it's absolutely adverse.
My vote is going to be no from now on for closed session. I don't like them, anyway.
But you want to go another one?
Look, I just need, I, I'm going to make a motion to recess for fifteen minutes. So I'm going to do.
Second. Turn them off, bird. So we can actually get up and going.
But everybody, it's got a part manager, like a. Uh, I have a contributions here. Motion.
Yes.
Yes. I also vote yes, and, uh, I'll talk about them deals, again, of the park, or, I'm here, uh, for, uh, park, uh. Is that, they'll be here?
Yeah, they'll be back.
But everybody, it's got a part manager, like a. Uh, I have a contributions here. Motion.
Yes.
Second. Second, second.
Yes.
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 Trey.
I thought I'd vote no, I didn't want to get voted.
Also, vote yes, sir, now.
Um, no, real quick, uh, can I have, uh, Ms. Hackney come up and get with Sandy and Trish, and get all of her paperwork?
That's Trish and Tammy.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, Trish and Tammy, whoever's over there, that way she can start immediately.
Yeah, Trish and Tammy, Tammy, over there, the part of, Trish is part of the.
Yes. All right, thank you.